We will now move on to our item 6.6, our 945 presentation on California Advancing and Innovating Medical CalAim. And this will be presented by Behavioral Health, and Director Metcalf is here.
I hope I don't have to drive those things. Matthew told me he would run it for me. Oh, look, there it goes. Perfect. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Services. So I thought it was time to bring this to your board. There are a lot of changes happening at the state level that are affecting not only Behavioral Health Services, but other departments here in the county. And as Supervisor Crandall just said, this is CalAim. It's the California Advancing and Innovating Medikal Initiative. And I shouldn't say initiative singular, because there are a lot of initiatives involved in this. And so what I'm going to attempt to do today, and I'll try to keep it brief, is to give you a very high-level overview, like a 30,000-foot or higher overview of what this means to my department. I'm going to speak to this from a behavioral health perspective. But as I said, there are other departments involved that may want to chime in as I go through this, but I'm really speaking to this from my department's perspective. And I'm by no means an expert on this, because this has been a bit of a moving target and an evolving thing that has started, actually, in January, is when the CalAim initiatives actually rolled out. And there are subsequent initiatives that are rolling out later, which I'm going to talk to during this presentation. And I apologize. You could probably read it from here. I scripted this out because I didn't want to forget anything, so I apologize if I have to read some of this, because I don't want to miss anything. So if we could move to the next slide, which points out, these are the particular initiatives, CalAim initiatives, that are going to affect Lake County Behavioral Health Services, and not just Lake County Behavioral Health Services, but all Behavioral Health Services departments throughout the state. And so I will talk through each one of these points. I'm not going to read them, because I don't like it when people read the slides. So if we could move to the next slide, I will talk about the first point, population health management. So we, Lake County Behavioral Health Services, will be required to implement a person-centered strategy that includes assessments of clients' health risks and health-related social needs. This particular initiative will focus on prevention and wellness, which we're already doing a lot of that, along with coordination of care across different service delivery systems. It's exciting to see this, because I like the whole upstream approach, because this is where we've been trying to move for a long time. Instead of being reactive, we want to be proactive, and I really appreciate the Department of Healthcare Services rationale around this, that we need to try to alleviate problems before they occur. The data-driven piece, I know some board members might be very interested in that, and I'm very excited about that piece of it, too, because, as I've mentioned before, we are one of a few pilot counties in the state of California that are entering into a new electronic health record system, which is being driven by the California Mental Health Services Authority. And we are one of a handful of counties that are part of this, and this electronic health record system pilot program will go into effect in January of 2023. And we're very excited about that, because it will support this whole population health management piece. Next slide, please. So enhanced care management. This really is going to focus on the adult, high-utilizers of the systems and programs in our county. And I say adult, because right now, this is specifically for the 18-plus age demographic. How this is going to work, I mean, this is going to be more of an in-person engagement with clients, meeting them where they are, and engaging them in what's familiar to them, that they can access programs and services, clinical or non-clinical, which is kind of a new thing for us. Partnership Health Plan began doing this in January. Behavioral health departments throughout the state are required to start implementing this on July 1 of this year. And although, as I said, this really focuses on adults, the children piece will go into effect in July of 2023. So this providing access and transforming health path, as we say, this is a big deal. It's a five-year, $1.85 billion initiative to support not only county organizations, but community-based organizations, hospitals, the tribal community, in order to support all of this in implementing these CalAim initiatives. And a lot of this involves what we call whole-person care. And I was tuned into the meeting earlier today, and I was struck by what Supervisor Pyska was saying about the Boggs Forest thing, that was an amazing presentation, but there was a comment about whole-person care, or how important something like a trail system helps us with our mental health or behavioral health. So I appreciate you bringing that up. That was pretty cool. Next slide, please. Community supports. This, if any of you have looked into any of this CalAim stuff, is also referred to as "in lieu of services." It's really about enhancing and improving, what I mentioned before, this whole wraparound service approach that involves supportive services around housing, medically tailored meals. It really plays a fundamental role in meeting our clients' needs around health-related services that really determine and address the social determinants of health. Next slide, please. This is really fancy, behavioral health delivery system transformation. The California Department of Healthcare Services plans to strengthen the state's behavioral health continuum of care, really by promoting a better integration of physical and mental health services and programs. And that's pretty revolutionary, because they're so tied together. If, and as you may have heard me say before, I mean, if you don't have proper mental health, you don't have good physical health. They go hand in hand. And so this particular initiative is designed to streamline existing policies, improve access to behavioral health services, and really also simplify how these services are funded, because it's pretty complicated right now, where the funding comes from to provide both mental and physical health services. And so this really supports also the integration of mental illness and substance use disorders treatment, which that's kind of one of the overarching goals of this as well, because we talked about the regional model, the drug-medical regionalization model, which had to do with the 1115 drug-medical waiver. This is a big part of that, because the state's goal, Department of Healthcare Services' goal, is to truly integrate mental health and substance use disorder services by January of 2027, which that's a pretty big deal, because it only makes sense. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as we know, folks who are now, or who have spent time in jails, correctional facilities, et cetera, are at a much higher risk of injury or death than the general public. So the key to addressing this problem is to ensure that those that are in these facilities are enrolled and engaged in medical before they're released, so that they can access so many services. What this also speaks to is if those that are not eligible for medical, we will be charged, we and other partner departments -- Sheriff Martin. I mean, we will need to be working together to figure out, if they're not eligible for medical, what are their avenues and programs and services would these folks be eligible for? This particular piece of this will go live January 2023. So there are already conversations happening around this, but as you can see, these are pretty lofty goals and initiatives, and there's a lot of planning that needs to go into this. So I just, a lot of this is still new to me, too, so I'm worried about any questions you may have, but we'll just keep moving through this, and I'll do the best I can to answer them. Next slide, please. So this is one of my favorites, payment reform. This is huge. This is slated to go into effect by July of 2023. You've heard me talk about cost reports and fiscal reports, and yay, my department finally got caught up on them late last year, but this is going to, this is supposed to fix some of that. It's going to turn, it's going to turn it from more of a cost-based reimbursement for services model to a value-based reimbursement model, which, as I mentioned earlier, will integrate more of the behavioral health and physical health piece of it. So we, in theory, what this says is that we will have more flexibility to be able to bill for even more services with much more financial flexibility than we ever had before. I do want to add here that I am the co-chair of the County Behavioral Health Directors Association Financial Committee, and this has been a hot topic, because the state is so far behind in auditing all the county's cost reports, that even though we're caught up, the state isn't caught up. And so their goal is to get this done by July of 2023, so that they can implement this new type of cost reimbursement. And so I'm, needless to say, I'm very excited about it, because I think it's going to offer us more, much more flexibility in the programs and services we can be, for which we can be reimbursed. So I'm very excited about this. Next slide, please. Peer support. So I have asked, and I hope he's here somewhere, I've asked Scott Abbott, our Mental Health Services Act and Housing Program Manager, to speak to this, because this also is a huge component of these CalAim initiatives that I'm talking about. And Scott, are you here?
He's in the attendees. If we can get him moved over to panelist, then yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And he's on his way.
Excellent. Yeah, I don't have any notes about this one, so it's all up to him.
I see his hand up in the attendees area. There we go. I think he's moved over. Yep, he's in the panelist area now.
Oops. Sorry. Hello, good morning. Peer support. CalAim seeks to improve quality outcomes, reduce health disparities, and transform the delivery system, as been described as the purpose. CalAim enables clinical care to be paired with a range of non-medical services. These services, which will be reimbursed by Medical, include housing supports, medical respite, personal care, medical tailored meals, and peer supports. Peer support specialists provide recovery-oriented, culturally-appropriate services that promote engagement, socialization, self-sufficiency, self-advocacy, promote natural supports, and are trauma-aware. Studies have verified the effectiveness of peer support, and it's often complementary with clinical services. SB 803, known as the Peer Support Specialist Certification Program Act of 2020, recognizes the benefit of peer support provides to individuals and families with mental health and substance use difficulties, and the increased diversity and effectiveness peers bring to the health workforce. Lake County has chosen to opt in into peer certification, and will therefore be able to seek medical reimbursements under this new benefit for services. Staff are currently in the process of becoming certified, including grandparenting in. Peer support staff will continue to work with those in need, including working at the peer support centers around the community. Although each has a focused population that its culturally-sensitive services are provided to, they are also open to all. Peer support staff will also continue, or will be working as access points for a homeless coordinated entry system, and our pathways hub. These programs are designed to help vulnerable community members get into the services that they need from providers across the county. The pathways hub will also be supported by CalAim, which itself is a presentation that we'll probably do later with the board. Peer support staff also accompany, will be accompanying, or are accompanying, our outreach and engagement services with our new outreach van. And finally, we also have volunteer peers through Canuck Day Senior Support that are going out into the homes of our older adults throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Next slide, please. So CalMhSA, the California Mental Health Services Authority, they have been extremely helpful and instrumental in helping counties throughout the state navigate this whole thing, and we're one of them. We have leaned heavily on this organization to help us figure all this out, and how are we going to do it? You know, as a matter of fact, your board recently approved an agreement with the California Mental Health Services Authority around this behavioral health quality improvement program that specifically covers these CalAim benchmarks around payment reform, policy changes, and data exchange. And we're very grateful to them, and in hindsight, it might have been a good idea for me to have invited someone from CalMesa to come and speak to this, but they're also the ones that are helping us with this electronic health record system. They've just been an amazing resource, helping us with this, because this has been, this has been a lot. Next slide, please. I think I'm going to the next slide. Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah, for more information. So, you know, I've outlined some timelines, and the timelines have sort of been, again, the Department of Healthcare Services kind of wavered on some of these timelines. They've pushed some back, moved some forward, but really, what my presentation here is, is I just want to give the board kind of a heads-up on what's coming down. I don't have a lot of answers yet, because we're still trying to figure a lot of this out, but really, the long-term goal, at least from a behavioral health perspective, is, I'm excited about this, because it's integrating behavioral health and substance use disorder services. As you've heard me say a million times, you know, 80% of the folks we serve are what we call co-occurring. They have a substance use disorder and a mental illness, and our mental health programs are bound to HIPAA standards. Our substance use disorder services programs are, they have to adhere to CFR 42, California Federal Regulation 42, which is a higher standard than HIPAA. So when I have a mental health clinician and a substance abuse counselor working with one client, we have to get a release of information in order to share that data, even though it's under my department's purview. So this is going to be huge. It's going to make our work much easier, even though the state thinks they're going to have this integration complete by 2027. I'm very hopeful, but it's really going to help us better serve the folks that we serve. So I have to say, this has been a lot of information, and I have, I'll leave these handouts. I gave you, I printed off a little bit more information about CalAim, and it outlines all the initiatives that I just discussed. I also have staff standing by if there are any questions, because I don't know if I will be able to adequately answer them, because a lot of this is still in the planning stages, but I wanted you to know that this is what's coming, what's coming to the Behavioral Health Services Department. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I thank you for allowing me to share this. And I do want to say, before I conclude, even though I just said I concluded it, that I will, I will be keeping your board apprised of our progress in this, and yeah, there will be more to come. So thank you.
Todd, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you, Scott, for having part of the presentation as well. Supervisor Sabate, it looks like you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, this is definitely a hot topic in CSAC, a huge change for, everybody is trying to figure out how to better work collaboratively, and also meet expectations of what it is that we're trying to get accomplished and get done. I just wanted to say that I have been invited to meet with the work group that is meeting right now. I believe Behavioral Health, the Sheriff, Health Services, Social Services, I think those are the main--
And probation.
And probation are the main contributors to that. Been to one meeting. I don't know if I've missed anything else. I don't think there's been another meeting since then, but I know it's tough, because the state of California has not finalized their guidelines, and so how do you prepare for something? And we know that this happens. Ideas come out, but the specifics of the regulations take quite a while to get finalized, and usually it's at the last second. So how do we best prepare for that? I love the outcomes that we need to look at for this, because I think it's been difficult. I think that a lot of times, we are mandated to provide a service, but there's not any expectation of any specific outcomes, and so we're busy meeting the mandate, but sometimes the actual outcomes part, which is the important part for our community, to see the changes and the effect and the impact of those services, I think this is now a lot more focused on ensuring that we bring some outcomes to the services that we provide. There's not much of a question, other than a sarcastic one. How many millions of dollars are they providing us in order to put this together and meet their new mandates? And I believe the answer at this moment is nothing. They're trying to work within the boundaries that they're already providing the funding for. There may be some other funds that come out later, but right now, they're really asking a lot for changing without much behind it to help us out with those changes.
Well, as I think I mentioned earlier, there is $1.85 billion. It's over the course of five years. I mean, that's not what Lake County is going to receive, but what all the counties are going to receive in order to support this, which doesn't necessarily go specifically to a county agency, it's all agencies and organizations that will support these initiatives. So there is money.
But to me, it's the long-term sustainability of providing that is, we're going to need some funds to provide that. Right now, those funds are meant for the transition--
Absolutely.
But the long term is always the big question mark of, how do we continue this? I think it's a good conversation, but I think a lot of counties are very nervous about what's the bottom line going to look like once this is all implemented by mid to late 2023, because nobody knows at this moment in time.
Yes, we're all concerned.
Are there any other comments? Anybody from the public that has a, Joan, if you'd like to come up and speak?
I am an enabler. I try to help people, and I really support what Todd is trying to do and what the sheriff is trying to do. There's a woman and her family in Clear Lake. They don't even have phones. They owe $700 for electricity. Their tribal electricity has been charged, even though they don't live at Elhim. They're disenfranchised. I didn't get the correct phone number for the tribal chairman. From, Thomas had a phone number that wasn't correct, and you can't help them unless you go over there, and some of us don't have the gas to get over there. So there's a very great need to do what this is, and I know Todd talked to me always, working with the sheriff, and I think it's something that's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Are there any other comments from the public on this item? All right, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabate?
I do have a question while the sheriff is in the room with us. I know that some of CalAim potentially changes how medical services works in the jail. Wondering if you can provide some detail, or if that's still kind of a gray area that we're not 100% sure.
Sure. As you mentioned earlier, we're still working on trying to get the finalized guidelines from the state, but we do know it's going to have an impact for the sheriff's department operations. The impact is, to us, is to make sure that we ensure the accessibility for service providers in there, service providers being either for behavioral health or medical services. I'm sure that'll be a topic of the conversation in the request proposal that's coming out for health services provisions in the jail. The other thing that we, our responsibility is to make sure that there's access for the eligibility and enrollment people through social services. So we have policies in place. We've actually had some policies in place for quite some time, as far as getting such service providers in the county. We plan to incorporate those existing policies and make any changes that are needed to account for any differences that CalAim has for us. The idea is to get people, and probably without getting into too much of the weeds, the state of California has applied for a waiver from the federal government. Currently, if you're incarcerated for a period of time and you're enrolled in medical, your benefits are suspended. If you're incarcerated for over a year, your benefits, I believe, are terminated. I might be speaking out of school here, and somebody from social services would probably be able to provide a little bit more detail and clarity and precision, but that's my understanding of how it works. So now we have people that, when they're released from jail, they walk out into the, out in the wild and have no safety net. What CalAim strives to do is make sure that 90 days prior to their release, they're enrolled, or if they're eligible, they're enrolled in medical, and services can start up to 90 days before their release, and have that warm handoff that was mentioned in Director Metcalf's presentation. So we're ready to do what we need to do to make sure that access is provided to the facility and get people help they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I just have one last one. Does this fit in anything with Care Corps, or is that something totally separate? Is it something that's going to plug in eventually? I know that that's still--
I'm working on a presentation on that as we speak, so I will get that to you hopefully before the end of July.
But are they hinged on each other, or are they separate?
Kind of, sort of, not.
So it makes it even more--
It's still one of those, it's one of those things that are still evolving.
To help complicate--
But I do want to bring this to your board, because you need to be aware of it, but I've been waiting, because there's a lot of controversy around it right now.
It's not been finalized.
Yeah. I'll be back.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And can I lead, can-- And can I lead, can I...
Oh, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Please.
Yes. Yeah, when you can't sleep tonight, read that.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.